That's a killer.
Oh, there you go.
I haven't done P very often. We haven't done P very often.
The time is four thirty PM. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of nine January twenty twenty four is called to order. I'd ask those in our audience if you have not signed the clipboard by the back door, if you'd please do so before you leave this evening. Also ask everybody if they put their cell phones on vibrate. Roll call of members, Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markcraft, Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here.
Want to welcome each one of you here at our city council chambers this evening, also those joining us by Zoom. Remember, our city council meetings are on the Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also seen on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. I just have a couple announcements here for the next couple of weeks. Monday, January fifteenth is Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day, and city offices will be closed, and our next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January thirtieth at four thirty PM here in the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments other than if you are not on the agenda this evening? Anyone for citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none. Item number three, Agenda additions and deletions. I have two additions. Item number twenty-six is Police Chief Oath of Office. Item twenty-six is Police Chief Oath of Office. Item twenty-seven is Great Northern Road Easement. Item number twenty-seven is Great Northern Road Easement. Any other additions or deletions?
Move to approve with the addition.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carried. Okay, item number four is Approval of Consent Agenda, and I'm going to read these. There are several items. Item number four, A is Approval of Minutes of the Council Meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Item four B is Approval Accounts Payable Listing from twelve twenty, twenty twenty-three, and one nine, twenty twenty-four. Item four C is a Point Clerk Treasurer, Daniel Harthoon. Item four D is Designated Official Newspaper, Pelican Rapids Press. Item four E is Designated Official Depositories, Minnesota National Bank, Bell Bank. Item four F is Appoint City Attorney, Krakowburg Law Office. Item four G is Approve Expenses to Fire, Police, Liquor Store Clerks, Mayors, Regional Meetings and Trainings. Item four H is Approval Payment of Administrator and Clerk Treasurer Bonds. Item four I is Approve Payment of Liquor Store Bond. Item four J is Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Membership Renewal. Item four K is Minnesota Council of Airports Membership Renewal. Item four L is Otter Tail Lakes Country Association Community Collaborative Annual Membership. Item four M is Twenty twenty-four Mileage of sixty-seven Cents a Mile. Item four N is Authorized Credit Card Use City Administrator, Lance Royson, up to five thousand dollars. Clerk Treasurer, Daniel Harthoon, up to five thousand dollars. Police Chief, Todd Quaintance, up to a thousand dollars. Fire Chief, Chad Hansen, up to a thousand dollars. Park and Street Superintendent, Brian Olson, up to a thousand dollars. Liquor Store Manager, Maggie Johnson, up to a thousand dollars. And Library Director, Annie Rig, one thousand five hundred dollars. Also, city policy permits department heads to authorize up to five hundred dollars per purchase order. Department heads must provide a purchase order within twenty-four hours of credit card use. Purchase order must have date, used vendor name, explanation of use, and amount charged. Also provide invoice or receipt as soon as they are available. Item four O is Outdoor Sales Lot License, twenty twenty-four, is Giovanni Zavala Martidas. Item four P is staff, four P one is Staff Reports. One is Police Chief Report, which is in the packet. Four P two is Financial Report, which is in the packet. And four P two A is Property Casual League of Minnesota Cities for twenty, of twenty twenty-three, of dividend of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second.
I'd like to pull, so the comp report would be included in the financial report?
Mm-hmm.
Pull the financial report. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Ken?
Yes.
So we'll approve everything except the financial report. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carried. Then we'll go to item number four, a financial report. Councilman Ballard?
Well, I just have, the question is, I have the comp report on the, that was on the desk. I thought overtime had to be approved, and I thought they could carry over a balance of up to forty hours?
Up to forty hours can be approved by, anything over forty hours has to be approved by council.
To carry over?
To be paid out.
Okay.
According to our policy, it has to be paid out at the second payroll in December.
Okay. Answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other councilmen have any questions regarding that?
No.
If not, is there a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carried. Let's go to item number twenty-six. It is Police Chief Oath of Office, and at this time I ask our newest Chief Police, Todd C. Quaintance, to come forward. Todd officially joined our police force during the city payroll yesterday, but he's going to be receiving the oath of office today, and so happens today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so they all hand in hand. So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Todd C. Quaintance, do solemnly swear.
I, Todd C. Quaintance, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Chief of Police.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Chief, Chief of Police.
Within, within and for the city of Pelican Rapids and the state of Minnesota.
Within and for the city of Pelican Rapids and the state of Minnesota.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations. All sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five is Assistant Fire Chief Approval, and we have our new Fire Chief, Chad Hansen, is here. Chad?
I would like to make the recommendation to hire Jesse Hoodley as our Assistant Chief.
Say that again, please.
The Fire Department would recommend to put Jesse Hoodley as our Assistant Chief of Fire Department.
I move to approve.
Motion second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carried.
Good.
Thank you. And thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Item number six is Farmer's Market Request, and we have Ryan Pesch, who is very instrumental in our farmer's market.
Thanks, yeah.
He has a request for us this evening, Ryan.
Okay, well, good. I thought it was a nice opportunity to just give a quick update. I'm a talkative person, but I can be concise. So this past year, we had fifteen, sixteen vendors throughout the course of the season, and certainly we did our usual running on Friday evenings from three to six PM. Started in mid-June, went to the first week of October, had our annual Labor Day meal, which was also a great success. And so certainly, I mean, in terms of business before here, we are on city property, so I think you all remember that.
Mm-hmm.
And I do pay for upkeep of that and mowing and all that kind of stuff, so if there's any kind of issues, we could make those known here. But the request is, in conversation with our fellow vendors, especially with the construction coming this year, kind of consensus is like, would there be a chance that we could move to city or Veterans Park for the season as opposed to being in our current location? And so that was kind of thinking. I didn't know exactly who to bring it to. Called the city, they say, just come to the council.
Mm-hmm.
So here we are.
Here we are.
Yeah. So I guess that's our request, if that ought to be brought up to somebody else or park board or whoever.
Ryan, does that request require moving the buildings?
No, no, no. We are not moving buildings. It would be very, very temporary, you know, we would use canopies.
Okay.
In a temporary situation, nothing will be moved to Veterans Park except for us on Fridays, three to six PM, essentially it.
Superintendent Olson, do you have anything to comment on there?
I think it's a good idea. My one concern is going to be, with that being a detour, is parking on the street. We may have to make no parking because with semis passing each other, even there, it's wider, but you get a bunch of cars parked on both sides of the street there, I think you're going to be, it'll be an issue. I mean, we do have parking lots, we all know that, but we also know that if we can walk ten feet instead of one.
Yeah, yep, yep.
So I think we'll have to look at that, otherwise I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
The only other comment I have is if you ever do decide to move those buildings.
Yes.
Space them differently so they're not right across from each other.
Okay.
For removal purposes is what's been.
Sure.
Kind of a, they're very narrow through there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll get you on that.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Pesch or Brian?
Brian, what's narrow? I didn't get that.
Where their buildings are downtown.
Yeah.
It's very narrow when we're moving snow through there.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So if they were just staggered, it would be, wouldn't have to run into them.
Sure. Makes sense.
Yeah.
That's city property, right?
Correct.
And you, why are, why are you paying to mow it?
That was part of the deal when we set it up, that they would maintain the summertime mowing of it, so.
Okay.
Just went down that way, I guess.
Yeah, just went down that way.
And it hasn't been an issue, I don't think.
No, it hasn't been an issue. I mean, we, Bradricks do it, you know, and they probably did it maybe eight times a year or something like that. To me, I offered it just because it seemed like, hey, you're good enough to let us use the property, at least we can do is keep it up. I guess that's, I think, the exchange, maybe, is how it came, so.
I move that we allow them to use Veterans Park for the farmer's market for the summer. Or as we.
Your second? Yeah, I'll second that. Motion second.
I was just.
So you. Steve was thinking here, and I want to hear what his thoughts are.
I want to know what they're doing today. I thought they were moving stuff. There were trucks down there.
Oh, at the farmer's market?
Yeah.
Wasn't me, no idea.
Wasn't delivery truck, was it?
No, it was like, they were making noise and drilling.
Oh, I think, yeah. Remax is putting some windows in on the south side of the building.
So Ryan, you can, you can work with Brian as far as where you're going to set up, so it doesn't hinder parking too much?
Sure.
Okay.
And if maybe there's some kind of signage or something, we need to put up the day of, no parking here or something like that, we can just, as we get closer, we got till between now and June.
You can also talk to the Chief of Police, because he's involved with traffic.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that might have it, no parking there anyway through the detour, they might have it signed well or coned up or whatever, but we'll have to see.
Very good.
That just will become considered private.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carried. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you much. Very good.
Take care. Item number eight, Street and Park Report. Superintendent Olson?
Very quick. Obviously, it's not been the normal winter that we're used to with no snow, so we have sanded a few times. We've spent a lot of time doing a lot of cleanup in certain little areas, like we've been working up by the community gardens, kind of getting, doing some brushing, cutting some dead trees out of there, doing stuff like that. The last week and a half, we have put, well, we've been out four times trying to combat the ice, which actually didn't turn out as bad, but, and then just prior to that, we had the streets we brought in December, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. It was, it was weird. So we did dismowing and sweeping in the month of December this year, so that was a little different. On the park side of things, I think it's, I want to thank you guys for supporting Doug and Jim with the Christmas lights in Peterson Park. That was, I think a lot of people enjoyed that, so that was good. Appreciate that. The skating rink is set up. They talked to the school, they think they might want to open Saturday, but I don't know that we're going to have the base of ice up there for that or the weather for them to open. It sounds like it's going to be cold, so that, but we are trying, we are trying. We're going to have to do a little work with the school next year to try to find a little bit more level lot if they're going to have, have water to skate on, so. But that's what I have. Any questions for me?
What is the ice skating rink in relation to the building?
It's, we put it back over where it kind of was last year and just made it a little smaller because of the slope that we had. So we've still got a little slope, but less of a slope than we did, because where they originally planned for it was right outside of their building. And I even brought Lance up and said, how do you, how do you make a skating rink on a hill, you know, without it? We'd have the same scenario as we did last year. So we decided to move it back over there, and then we'll have to work with the school district on something more permanent next year, so.
Any other questions for Ryan? If not, is there a motion to approve his report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carried. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Well, good. Item number ten, the youth, and we have Stacy Almeras here, and they're going to make a presentation. Stacy, do you want to introduce everyone that is with you?
Yeah, yeah.
You can do the formal, you can all come forward, but if you want to do the.
Everyone. We will, yeah, so it's been about a year since the youths have been here in their initial phase of forming, and so Hamda is going to give an update on what the youths have been up to in the last, over the last year, and some really recent big events. And Hanan wrote a leadership action plan for a class at school, and I think it's really appropriate for her to share that. And then Alex is here with some things from the Bridge Center. Our friend Celeste is here from West Central Initiative, and I'll share a little bit about the Initiative Foundation Fellowship opportunity that we have coming up, too.
Thank you.
So, Hamda.
Hi, my name is Hamda Ibrahim, and I'm here, I'm here for an, I'm here to give you guys an update on what we've been doing this year. So, starting off in April, we went bowling with the mayor and, wait, no, sorry, not with the mayor, like, just our group and a bunch of other kids, and then we went to the Frazee Corner Store, which they also have a youth community center down there. And then in May, we went to the pool hall with the mayor, and then we also went to Pete's Street for some ice cream with other students that came. In June, we did the Friendship Festival and the pontoon, we went to like, a pontoon ride with Stacy. And then this fall and August, we went to Valley Fair with a prayer group, which was also welcoming week. And then in November, we went to the State Capitol for a youth policy. We also went to an art show, and we went to Target Corporate Office. And then in the beginning of December, we met with Leila Hussain. She's a student from NDSU, and we were talking to her about the youth. And then at the end of the December, we got our building, and then, yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hanan Mohammed, and I want to tell you guys more about the youth's organization. We are a group of young people who are working together to get a youth center. We want a youth center because these centers help kids and the youths develop and grow their physical, emotional, and social abilities to experience with their peers. Kids in Pelican Rapids currently hang out in parking lots, soccer fields, and gas stations. The youth center would be great and a safe place teens could go. Another reason we would love to have a youth center is because of our parents. Our parents also would like to know where we are. Parents may have to worry about their children's safety and well-being. A youth center can provide a sense of security for the parents, knowing that their children are supervised and safe, are in a safe environment to spend their time. Now having a youth center can limit opportunities for youths to engage in activities and access resources and support that contribute into their personal development and growth. It is important for the community members to provide spaces and programs to cater to the needs and interests of young people. A goal would be to help provide a safe, inclusive space for youths where young people could build positive relationships and explore their interests. Another goal is also to create a safe space where they could engage and learn from each other. To reach my goal, I have, I have to have a clear vision of what the youth center is going to be like. We would also like to work hard by starting to do research on our community and people. For example, the fundings, the people, we need location and staff. Having permits and license for certain things, we already know about our funding. Celeste helps us get the grants and keep track of everything. We also have Stacy Almeras, because she has lots of connection, connections. Location is almost set, is set, and we have a board meeting tomorrow, December sixth, twenty twenty-three, to talk about the staff. That was when I wrote it. How can adults help out? Adults can listen to young people and respect and have confidence, confidence in them. They could also help give us platform, promote membership, and provide additional support if they need it. Who are the adults that helped out? The mayor helped out a lot. Alex Omen and Gary Weigle were also key leaders. The Congressional Church Board is the one who decided to donate to us. Gary Weigle was the chair of the board, and Alex Omen is the faith church pastor. He has coordinated the proposal for the Bridge Center and serves on the food shelf, shelf board. I know that there is more information I need to gather at this time, such as the building costs and ETC. I did some research on that, and most, most youth centers make around thirty-four thousand yearly. I would also, will need to know the local tax for the building like this. Some things we also need is to write to the church and let them know how much we appreciate the building, make an appointment to see the building, and making a memo, and much more. The first four things I have listed were completed. We are currently still talking to more, more groups of people who can help us put this together. I hope that one day my plan continues to grow, and the youth center gives everyone a safe and inclusive place to stay.
Thank you. Pastor Alex?
That's me, Pastor Alex of Faith Lutheran Church. If you'll permit me, I'll just spend a couple minutes to fill you in on the details of the Bridge Center. It began back in August. Mayor Brent came to me, knowing that Faith was looking to establish a furniture mission in Pelican and that this place would be available. Soon after going and looking at the Congregational Church, we realized that it would be underutilized as a furniture mission, and instead it might benefit the Pelican Rapids community more to be a multi-use nonprofit space. So we've established a group of community partners, which include the youths, obviously, as well as Oaks, Organized Acts of Kindness for Seniors. I should have had these written down, because my brain's farting. We're working with West Central Initiative and the Friendship Kitchen to build a commercial kitchen for community use in the space, as well as the food shelf, which I'm also on the board for, is looking to move to that space, though they won't make a decision on that until February. But as of now, Faith Lutheran owns the Congregational Church building. Once the community partners kind of get more established, we're planning to establish another 501(c)(3) that Faith will then transfer the building to, so we're just kind of stewarding it right now. In the meantime, we're focused on some of the immediate issues of the building, which is water and mold. It's had ongoing water issues, all the water coming from the north on the riverfront on Main flows down when it rains and snow melts right on the north side of the Congregational Church and sits there and gets in the window wells. And on the west side, too, the parking lot slants right to the building into the window wells. So we're going to hopefully be doing some landscaping later this spring, and we're looking into mold remediation. We've already raised some funds for that, still have a ways to go. But that's kind of what's going on with that, and unless you have any questions on it, I'll.
Any questions? Well, thank you.
You bet.
Hello, council. My name is Celeste Copy. I'm the Rural Initiative Strategist. I should have put my coffee down, so I'm going to put it right here. There's no, it's slanted, right? I'm the Rural Initiative Strategist at West Central Initiative, and I'll just say a few things about our role in the process. So I was invited to a youth meeting probably about a year and a few months ago, and we helped secure a grant through an opportunity through our network, so we are not the funder, but we helped identify and secure a small grant for the group. One thing I'd like to speak to as a regional stakeholder in this process is just the incredible opportunity you all have before you. A lot of times, we hear that it's not possible to have these things in a town this small, but I think we can all look at Frazee and say, well, heck, they proved us wrong. There are also examples in northeast Minnesota of just community centers truly serving really small communities. We can also make an economic argument for such a case, whether it's growing the tax base because families identify an opportunity for their kids. I'd just like to underscore Hanan, she mentioned parents knowing where their kids are. I grew up in a place where, yes, you hung out in parking lots and gas station parking lots, because there just aren't those spaces, especially in the winter. So there's a lot at stake here. West Central has been involved, again, with, you know, small grants and on the kitchen end of things, which my coworker Kate knows more about, so I will be kind of quiet on that front. But I just want to thank you all for what you do and just really highlight this opportunity and that we're here to be a part of any conversations and help in any way that's possible.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll close out things with, just saying a few things with the Bridge, we're calling the Bridge Center, because we really, it is bridging generations and cultures and community groups, all within one building. So when we're mixing up right now the youths and the Bridge Center, the youths are a part of what we are hoping becomes the Bridge Center sooner than later. One thing that I, so I had applied for last late spring, early summer with the Initiative Foundation, a fellowship opportunity, and applied for under the youths in support of getting the organization together and the long-term goal of a youth center. And in November, I found out I had received that fellowship, and so over the next two years, with the youths and the Bridge Center, I will be getting the skills, hopefully, learning some skills on the business side of things, how to bring together nonprofit, how to bring together community groups, and how to get a youth center up and functioning. So that is, again, sponsored through the Initiative Foundation and a partner with West Central Initiative. So we're super excited. Some of our next steps will be to go to the Planning Commission with, with some asks on how the city could.
on how the city could support alongside. And we know Mr. Ballard, we're holding you to that seventy-inch TV, right?
Seventy-five.
Oh, seventy-five inch TV, okay, good. And you may have seen out there, too, there is a GoFundMe that is starheaded. Morehead High School has an auction right now there because they moved into their new school. So they're selling everything from their old high school and the auction actually closes tomorrow. So we did start a GoFundMe. Faith is our fiscal host right now in hopes that we can get some really cheap equipment that would help us furnish the Bridge Center. So, any questions?
Any questions for Stacy or any of the groups? Well, thank you for all you've done so far and you're moving along. It seemed like a long road and...
Yeah, yeah, all of a sudden the snowball starts rolling, so, yeah. Until the next update. Okay, thanks.
Let's go on to item number eleven, EDA update. We have our Economic Development Director, Jordan Grossman, with us this evening. And there's like five or six bullet points, so we're gonna go through these one by one. And I think they all require a motion. The first one is OTC, CDA Technical Assistance Program Resolution 2024-01, which was in the packet. Jordan.
This is a resolution to show your support in applying for some technical assistance dollars at the county level. The EDA is, I think we're gonna talk about it here in a little bit. The EDA is recommending an updated housing study to you guys. And this would be a source of funding, partial funding for that study. So looking for a motion or a resolution approval here.
Counsel, are there any questions regarding that?
When was the last one done?
Two thousand fifteen.
Eight years ago?
Yeah.
And they should be updated how often?
I would say every five years, especially with the pandemic happening and the fact that we are a large Black Indigenous People of Color community. I think it's a good idea to have an updated study that reflects the current needs of every member within city limits.
I'll move we adopt Resolution 2024-01.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, motion carried. Next bullet point is appointment of EDA officers of 2024. And there's a list of those officers in your packet, also up on the screen right now. Jordan?
There is not much change. The only change would be that Ryan Beenick with ICS Solutions North on Highway 59 has stepped up with interest to serve in the president role this year. He practiced for a few months last year in the vice president role underneath Brent. I think it's a great idea. That's the only change as far as the EDA board.
Move to approve the EDA officers.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, motion carried. Next bullet point, Historic City Hall, Community Input. That was also in the packet. Jordan?
As you know, I sat at Historic City Hall the month of December, two hours every contract day, so Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for three to four weeks. The press was gracious enough to partner along with me and do some promotional mugs for the first visitor to increase some people coming and chatting with me about the space. That was a lot of fun. And while I was there, I asked a few simple questions and a lot of people had feedback for me without any questions provided. But these were the top three questions that were pertinent to my agenda with Historic City Hall, if you've had time to review them. Really, what people enjoy about the building. And I think that we could all agree that the preservation of the building was done well and it is a beautiful building inside and out. People like the warm atmosphere and the ability to have meetings in that space, since you guys have passed a meeting policy recently, and that there are finished, functioning ADA-accessible public bathrooms. I asked the question about the current use of Historic City Hall and if people would like to have the current use move forward or if there were other uses. And this is just a bullet point list of why people thought we should move forward with the current use or not. As you can see, overall, out of thirty community members surveyed, the answer was no to the current use of the main level of Historic City Hall for many reasons, but all pertaining to, there could be costs associated with the building being open and not having enough tourism output out of it, as well as the building being open the majority of the year during fall, winter, and spring months. The idea of leasing or selling the building was brought up. The idea of having the building open more often again was brought up, whether it be year-round or more hours. Or the idea of having the building open for things other than a meeting, so maybe an event. There was one person in particular who said, yes, I love the building the way it is. This is the way it was meant to function and I can appreciate that as well. So people had to say that the downtown area is lacking American cuisine, like a burger joint, a tap house, contemporary retail, or a coffee shop. Based off of community input, demand, trends, and opportunities, I've come up with a list of three recommendations for you as far as the main level of Historic City Hall. I guess I'm not necessarily asking for a motion tonight unless you want to move forward with any of my recommendations. But my first recommendation to you as far as the main level of Historic City Hall would be to lease it out for commercial use. Historic City Hall is in the center of our commercial area downtown. And the fact that we are short on a coffee shop, I think that the atmosphere and the possibilities with infrastructure that already exists or could easily be put into that building could happen pretty easily. So I've found some lease agreements with other SEDA communities who lease out government-owned space. So I have that as reference and then I could work more on that in the future. My second recommendation would be to consider opening up Historic City Hall on a full-time basis. And then with that, working on updating the seating arrangement in there so it's not how it is right now. A big chunk of the area is taken up by that really massive desk up front. I would recommend changing some things around in there to make it more accommodating year-round for people to come in and use it. My third recommendation would be to ask the Parks Board to oversee Historic City Hall and to strategize on ways to update the current meeting policy to allow events to take place in the building as well. So food for thought unless you want to move forward on any of my recommendations today.
Well, you had morning coffees in there. Was there a preponderance of opinion of where direction that building should go?
You know, for the most part, I think most community members who are here year-round would find this space underutilized the way that it is right now. Right now, in order to use this space, you would need to contact the library per our meeting policy. If it's a public meeting, it's free. If it's a private meeting, it's not expensive to most community members. Fifty dollars for four hours, ten dollars after that. But it's not something that you can just walk downtown and walk into. It's closed unless you are scheduling it to be open for yourself. I think that the location of the building and the fact that that's how it's operating right now is something that community members would like to see changed in the future.
We talked about this at a EDA meeting. And my question was, since it's, I mean, I thought it was on the historical record or register. So I didn't know if it was able to be leased or rented out commercially. And we've found out that it is not on the register and that it is able to be used in a lease, I mean, as a, you know, as a business. Or, I mean, we are able to lease it out and do something with it other than it's being used.
And on that note, I think it's an opportunity for you as a city to provide maybe a more affordable lease option to somebody to try out a business through road construction, especially when we are lacking, in my opinion, a coffee shop is front and center. But with that, I think you'd do it in a formal way. You would make a publishing in the paper to let people know it's for lease, to send in their proposal, and then we'd go from there. That way, everybody would have an opportunity to express whatever interest they have as far as putting a business in there. But it's a beautiful building right in the middle of it all, so.
Counsel, ready to take any action tonight or do you just want to chew on this a while?
Well, here it is, January. We'd have three, maybe four months for somebody to get in there. So I'd be comfortable with a motion to pass her first recommendation there to get a coffee shop or something in there.
For commercial, rented out for commercial use?
Yeah.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have a question. I'm here to engage...
You gotta speak to the mic, Joe.
Sir.
Introduce yourself.
Joe Clausen, Chamber of Commerce. Good to see you, Councilman. Just wondering, we were actually going to enter into, hopefully, an agreement with the city for the staffing for the tourist center for that same space. And I guess I'm just wondering how that could potentially work, if they can co-mingle in the same space, if the tourist center staffing is not going to happen. And then my final thought is, what do we do with the hole upstairs? You know, it's still doing nothing. So I had met with both Lance and Jordan. You know, we talked about some other previous plans. None have come to full fruition yet, but there are some other plans somewhere in the works, so.
I guess probably the upstairs is another topic all in itself, another discussion than what we're talking about just the downstairs.
And, but my question would be is if the visitor center is going to be staffed, can that co-mingle the same space with a retail business? You know, because they may not want that.
Jordan, what, you have an opinion on this?
Kind of to attention.
I think if you want to move forward with the idea, right, you could make a motion to approve. And, you know, if the space doesn't have any interest, it's gonna need to be staffed one way or another. But I don't really have an opinion. These were my recommendations based off of the time I spent down there. However, you guys want to proceed.
If we approve this recommendation, whoever would lease it would come into it knowing that was the situation. It wouldn't be a surprise to them. Correct?
Correct, yes.
Is the city still contracting with the county to staff that?
Yeah, that's up for renewal again this spring.
So maybe, based on if that's something you want to investigate further, we can come back to this at our next meeting. If you want to move forward with the lease idea, we can do that as well, but...
So last year, last summer, how often, with Ottertail County staffing it, how many days a week was downstairs open?
Tuesday through Saturday, so Tuesday through Friday, it's open from ten to four and Saturday is from ten to two.
Okay, so five days a week. Five days a week.
About seven hundred and thirty hours a year. For that six months, it's about seven hundred and thirty hours.
And in the winter, it's not open other than library or meeting room, meeting space. How often, does the chamber use upstairs other than storage, right? They don't...
Correct, which to me is a loss. You know, I mean, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well...
I'd love to see it doing something. You know, that's kind of my whole initiative is to move in a way that that, what we've all deemed as a great public space, that it can become a productive space. And I guess, you know, we're in stride to attempt to make something happen there. It's not quite in place yet. But as far as like the staffing, we, as the chamber, we're proposing to staff as opposed to Ottertail.
Yeah, that's the next agenda item.
Yeah, we're the next point on the agenda.
We don't want to get into that at this point. Any other discussion? You know, we can approve this, that doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Yeah, so say if we approved the lease option, what, I mean, so what does that, what's that look like? What's your next step in that?
I would come to you in two weeks. Is that when our next meeting is? Three weeks with a proposed lease after communicating with other SEDA colleagues. I've started that conversation just because this is one of my recommendations, but I'd like to bring it forward to you before bringing it to the press. But then we'd need to do like a formal request for proposals in the paper so everybody had the ability to see that the space is available and everybody would have the opportunity to express their interest and go from there.
What's that mean?
Well, you know, I don't know how much space Joe's talking about that, you know, how are you gonna enter that into the language or do we have to...
I guess in my opinion, Joe, if you're asking if it's gonna be a co-mingling type of thing, I would have to say that it would be an either or. I mean, I can't see a coffee shop or a burger place or a tap house or a contemporary retail store being okay with having a tourist center in a corner of their space. I mean, I don't, but it could be wrong.
Yeah, but if they weren't for it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get it. Nobody would apply. They'd know this upfront. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an afterthought.
I just, I...
Then we wouldn't get applications and then we'd say, well, we probably should change them.
I look at this as kind of a business generator.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And it's an opportunity. I mean, if somebody's willing to take a chance, possibly we could get something out of it. Jordan has done some of the, you know, to interview and survey and, you know, look at some of the ideas here, so.
And the underlying challenge to all of this, I mean, starting a business, going into the Apaka project we have coming at us in this coming summer, I mean, that's a...
But everybody knows that, so.
Right, but I mean, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a challenge, but it...
Maybe nobody would be interested.
Yeah, correct.
If we don't offer, we're not gonna find out, so.
Exactly.
But within your motion, it doesn't really allow for Joe's idea.
Are the people that are attending this meeting on Zoom, are they allowed to ask a question?
Who was that?
Who are we all speaking?
This is Patrick. I just have a quick question about if you were to rent that for someone to put a business in, what would the rent be?
Can you turn that up?
We have no idea what the rent would be at this point.
Right.
We would like to keep it. I would look into what commercial spaces are being rented out for right now. We do have a few commercial spaces open within the community right now. And I would utilize my SEDA colleagues to find something that, in my opinion, we should have affordable. We should have an affordable option for aspiring business owners and people who are in their homes right now to utilize the space if they're so interested. But I would not have a number to provide right now.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Could you identify your...
Could you identify yourself again?
Patrick?
Patrick.
What's the last name?
Patterson.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
That guy.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if we answered Steve's question.
So with my recommendations, you know, there's, there's one to lease it out commercially, and we're gonna do that. There's other recommendations that would include opening it as it is right now with more hours than we're, we're, we've been getting. So I think it's really making that choice. Do you want to keep it a tourist destination? Do you want to keep it the way it is? Or do you want it to be staffed throughout the summer, whether it be Ottertail Lakes Country Association or the chamber, or do you want to lease the space out?
I think it would be interesting to get Ottertail County, the, the people that staffed it last year, to see what kind of traffic they had. I mean, were they busy? Were they-
They have all those numbers. We don't have it here, but they have it.
So if, for the next meeting, if, if we could track that down to see what kind of traffic they had and interest, I mean, was it worth, did they feel it was worth their time to sit in there?
That'll give me, so there's two contracts that we have right now. So one is with Ottertail Lakes Country on the staffing. And then there's another one with the tourist information, and the name is escaping me right now, but they provide materials and things, and we're supposed to be displaying, it's with the state, correct? But, so we display these materials, and we, so we'd have to look at that contract as well.
Yeah.
I mean, either one of them stayed in there, I mean, written consent within whatever timeframe that we can be out, get out of those contracts, I believe. But those are just two that we have in place right now, so just to see that you're aware.
So at this point, you're looking for more information. We, we do have a motion on the floor. Unless whoever made the motion seconds willing to pull it.
No.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion?
Regardless of how the motion passes or not, I'd like information on, for the next meeting.
Yeah, I would too.
Yes, definitely.
And I'd like to find out if there's any interest in somebody starting a business here.
Absolutely.
There is interest.
Oh, really?
All right.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, any other further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, the next is 2024 Red River Valley Home and Garden Show, city contributions. Jordan?
I think I've, I've talked to some business owners in town to see if they want to provide any merch or discounts or coupons to their stores to have as a giveaway with some interactive games at the Red River Valley Home and Garden Show booth. In addition to that, I was wondering if the city would be interested in giving away some one-day pool passes, maybe 10 of them as a contribution for these interactive games.
Do we have anything else besides a pool pass?
Anything else you can think of either? That was just the first thing on, on my list.
I move that we approve 10 day, 10 day passes, 10 one-day passes for the-
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second, discussion?
It'll be good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it clear that it's contingent on like completion of, of construction, so.
And a pool or river pass?
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Last bullet point, housing study proposal, which was in our packet.
This would bring reference back to the first line item today. I've been applying for outside funding sources for an updated housing study. CETA will provide a housing study at no more than $14,750. EDA does have a budgeted $10,000, but it's always my goal to try not to use that. So looking at other funding opportunities, I've applied for two other funding opportunities besides this grant, one I'm going to reapply for. But I, I believe that we might have to utilize a little bit of budgeted money, but not, not near 15,000 of it. So this is something the EDA board is recommending we do. Again, you know, we have a very immigrant-heavy community, as well as multiple apartment buildings being built since the last housing study was done, which, in my opinion, makes that information out of date. So just looking for a final approval to schedule a time with CETA to come. Their tentative start date would be in April of next year. Could be sooner, though.
April of-
Sorry, this year. April of this year, 2024. CETA has a planning department, and I've gotten to know the planning director pretty well, and she would be excited to come here and start the process.
Well, we approved the, we approved the funding in the first point, so I guess it'd be kind of silly not to approve the housing. So I move to approve the, the housing study proposal.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Anything else?
No. Probably, there's, we should be getting some funding here soon from USDA for, I don't know what kind of vehicle it is, a parks vehicle, right? A parks mower? Yep. We've had an initial approval for a $27,000 grant for a new mower. So the city's contribution to that would be, you know, less than $10,000, so that's good news. And the Ottertail County HRA is moving forward with the small cities grant process. They're gonna, it sounds like they're gonna submit a full application here in April. So we're at a really competitive level right now.
The mower is for the city?
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, there's a community facilities program through USDA, and I went through that paperwork with, with a worker at USDA, and we received some, a decent chunk of grant money for that. So about 75% of it will be covered. That's it. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Didn't we talk about a banner at the EDA meeting for the Red River?
We did. And then I thought about, because we've already approved here, I believe that we've already approved at City Council up to $300 of spending allowance. I'm not, maybe we haven't?
I think we did, yes. Okay, sorry.
Okay, no, good checking.
Okay, congratulations on the grant.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you. Item number 12 is chamber staffing proposal for Historic City Hall. Joe Clausen.
Joe Clausen with the chamber. Evening again, gentlemen. So in conversations with Lance, we would like to propose that the Chamber of Commerce will staff the hours that have formally gone to Ottertail Lakes Country for the same rate and same time period. Do a few things. One, it would keep your, our local tax dollars local. It also gives an opportunity for the chamber to, if we volunteer staff that, it gives us a little opportunity to earn something that can go back into working with the business community and accelerating our business development as well. And so that's kind of where we're at. You know, and we're not necessarily opposed to, you know, what's going on. I mean, the buildings, I think ultimately something's going to have to be done with it at some point in time. So this may be a, a step in that spot, so.
Questions for Joe?
Well, with the county, we, with whatever agreement we've got with the county right now, they use the local person, right?
Correct.
Well, yeah. That, that position will be open now. She is not, no longer going to be doing it, so they will be opening that position if we move forward with them.
Okay.
So they'll be, they're, they'll need to hire for that position. So with going with Ottertail Lakes Country to staff like this, the, well, before the, the chamber was doing it, and then they couldn't do it anymore. I mean, they didn't have enough people, they just, it just didn't work. So that's how Ottertail Lakes Country came into the equation. And from what I've heard from Nick Leonard and from what Don was kind of saying, that the attraction was that it's, it's easier to staff it because it was, it was a full-time position. They, we, we have this contract, we're paying $24,000 a year, and that goes towards this full-time position, so it's easier to hire and easier to keep people on board, is what-
Okay.
What the theory was back that time and now, I guess, so.
So I wanted to clarify that, so I know kind of where we're at. But are you going to staff this with volunteers? And what do you, if you're volunteers, because I've worked with volunteers before too-
Mm-hmm.
And something comes up, doctor appointment or whatever, and then you don't have anybody there. So I'd kind of like to hear what your-
Plan or proposal is?
Yeah, plan for this is, what your-
Well, first of all, in history, historic review, when it was staffed by the chamber before, there was no pay involved. It was 100% volunteer. At this point in time, if we enter into this contract, then there would be pay associated with the hours. So one way or the other, someone would be there, and that would be on us, the chamber, to assure that. If we, the chamber, can do that through volunteer hours, then what would happen is that that would be a net gain for the chamber. So in a way, it would be not only supporting what the city council wants to do with having someone there to support the tourism of our community, obligating those things that are necessary in the contracts, it would also potentially be a help or an assistance to the Chamber of Commerce. So we would bear that responsibility of it. But it's a paid position with Ottertail Lakes Country, and it would be the exact same agreement with us.
So you, would the volunteers be paid volunteers, or just-
It depends on, if we have, if we have no one else to staff it, they would be paid.
So how much would they be paid?
Well, according to-
I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna cut the checks and take out taxes and do all that payroll?
Well, we are hiring a, a staff person, part-time, but they would be responsible for coordinating volunteers or seeing that it is staffed at some level. It would be staffed, but then what happens is that if we can staff with volunteers, that would be ideal for us, but it's exactly the same, my agreement with you. It will be staffed.
I guess my, my main concern is, it was staffed with volunteers before and it didn't work.
That's because there was no money involved with it.
But where's the, the volunteers aren't going to get any money.
It depends on. So, so let me, let me back this up, and I should say nothing about volunteers. The chamber will staff it for the same rate we agreed to with Ottertail Lakes Country.
Where's the chamber?
The Chamber of Commerce.
I know, but what people are you talking about? You got names behind the chamber?
Sure, I mean, we're an organization. I speak for the chamber board. We do have a resolution to enter into this.
They all volunteered saying they will do that?
We have a resolution that, yes, we would enter into this agreement, that it would be staffed.
Okay, then like Councilman Foster's concern is, somebody has a doctor appointment, they're gone that day, then what happens?
Sure. Worst comes to worst, one of us will fit in and staff it.
And you can guarantee that?
I would, I would say yes.
We more or less had a guarantee with Ottertail Lakes Country.
Yep.
If they didn't have that person, they'd bring somebody else from their office. But this is volunteers, so this is entirely different.
No, you're, you're talking two different things here. With Ottertail Lakes Country, the city paid. I'm looking at stepping into that paid agreement. The exact same agreement that you have with Ottertail Lakes.
The city paid Otter, the city paid Ottertail County to sit there-
Correct.
On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce.
No, not on behalf of the chamber.
Yeah, because you, you volunteered there before for nothing. So we were paying, we were paying to have somebody sit there. We were, we were contributing $24,000 of the chamber's money.
This is, this is quite confusing to me, because from, from the understanding that I had before, and you can please correct me, I've only been in town a few years, is that the chamber was 100% volunteer. There was no money involved with it when the chamber staffed it. Is that correct?
Well-
It was a paid position years ago.
It was a while ago, Jane and-
British Slavers.
She was paid. Yeah, she was paid.
Jennifer Hamm, when she worked down there, she was paid. Jennifer Hamm.
And that was recent.
Was that, were they-
That was recent, the chamber-
Seventeen, seventeen.
Were they paid for by, through the chamber or through us?
Not through us, through the chamber.
They were both chamber employees, but Jane and-
And then, yeah, there was a couple other ones too that worked after Jennifer, I know too, but-
So that was, so Jennifer Hamm's was 2017?
Correct.
Yep.
That was the last time I see that she was there.
But the chamber paid her.
Okay, and so when did we start with Ottertail County?
I think I saw the last one was like, or the first one was 2018.
Couple years ago?
Well, no, it was right-
Twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, I believe.
Okay, was that long?
Could be right around there.
It was right after.
Because I know, I know the chamber tried a couple more people, because I want to say there was a Jenny Lammers or something that tried down there, and somebody else worked there for a little bit. And then they, they just couldn't keep it staffed, so then we found, um-
I know I recommend, I remember seeing one in 2020, and I can't remember if it was one in 19 or 18 or not, but, I mean, agreements with Ottertail Lakes Country.
So 2020 for sure?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Question.
Councilman, stand. Joe, you said some of the volunteers will be paid, but others won't. That's what I got out of this.
Okay, now, let me-
We shouldn't have thrown out the volunteer work.
Correct, correct. I will resolve that. The chamber will, will staff it at the same rate that you have the agreement with Ottertail Lakes Country.
So rather than pay-
Ottertail.
Ottertail County $24,000, we pay the chamber $24,000, and it becomes their responsibility to staff it for the hours that were agreed upon under the same agreement with the county.
Yeah, yeah. So at this point, i- if this would pass, and you have three volunteers that come forward and that's it, what happens then?
No, that's my responsibility. But what would happen is that-
Not your responsibility, it's the chamber's responsibility.
Correct, correct. Me speaking for the chamber at this point in time.
And what if they say no?
Uh, we've made a resolution and an agreement to do that, that we would staff it. You know, because if you break it down by the hour, what is paid would be about $18 an hour to Ottertail Lakes Country. For that same agreement, I will find someone who would be able to staff it.
For $18 an hour?
And they may not be a chamber person.
Absolutely. It can be a chamber person.
Okay, then you're paying them, then they aren't a volunteer.
And I should have never used the term volunteer, I guess. Maybe that's what, what I need to retract.
I want to go about this in a little different way.
Okay.
Would it be possible for the chamber to work with Ottertail Lakes Association to fill this spot?
I don't understand why that would do anything to benefit. You know, because there, there's a couple things here. One, I mean, Ottertail Lakes Country, and I, I want to say this openly, they receive in excess of $100,000 from the county alone, and they receive, they have a $450,000 budget. Okay, so they've got a huge budget, they have all paid staff. The chamber, we have a very, very small budget. We have no, but we're trying to work on one paid staff for eight hours a day. What this does is it gives us the opportunity to service the city with local people. Ottertail Lakes Country has got plenty of money from someplace else. It would empower the chamber to be active in the community, and you would have local people doing it.
You, you said you already have, you've already, you've already decided to hire somebody, a, a part-time staff?
Correct.
And you said eight hours a, eight hours a week?
Eight hours a week, yep.
Oh, you said day?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight hours a week.
Okay, so eight hours a week.
Can I ask a question, or do I have to go up there to ask a question?
Say again.
I want to clarify something. Do I have a question? Do I, do I have to go up there?
Yeah, go ahead. No, yeah, if you would, please.
Okay, all right. Okay. And maybe it's just because I'm going to be writing about this, so I want to understand it better. Joe, is it possible to say it this way, that the person that you want to hire may be the same person that would staff the, uh, Chamber City Hall agreement? Could it be the same person? In that way, it's a paid position, but the Chamber can keep some of that money. And I think that's where you were maybe going with the volunteer, the use of the word volunteer. Cause they wouldn't get paid twice, they'd get paid once. Is that a possibility?
It is a possibility. Uh, the person we hire, we do not know if they would be available for additional hours, but that would be part of the interview process.
Because they would be physically working, that, in that way, they are.
Correct, or coordinating, one way or the other.
Okay.
Lance, when is the contract due with Otter Tail County?
Well, it's a, it's a renewing contract, so unless, unless we give written notice, a 90-day notice, I mean, it's, it's in effect right now.
Okay, okay.
But I'm talking with Nick Leonard, I kind of gave him a heads up of what, what was being discussed and things. So there, um, like I said, Stephanie, um, is no longer working there, so they, they have this, this position is open right now. Or they would like to advertise and open for this position. Now, depending on how all this goes, they would like to kind of know.
Right, right.
If you're going in the Chamber direction, or if you're going, just going to stay with Otter Tail Lakes Country, because they'd like to start advertising, and they'd need to get a person in that position as well, so.
You, here. Be really nice to know how many people utilize that service. I mean, was it two a day, or one, or 10, or nine?
I mean, I had conversations with Marie and with the Stefani, and they felt like, for the most part, they just utilize, utilize it as a workspace. They did not have a lot of demand as far as, uh, uh, high-level tourism questions that came to them while they were there. But I don't know what the numbers is. You'd have to track that through Otter Tail Lakes Country.
I think this is another thing that we get that information from Otter Tail County on use, how much it was used and utilized and. When you said. If it's not, if, if the person that's staffing it themselves is saying that it was, wasn't utilized, I mean, do what you did, get what you got, you know? I mean, that's.
Joe, back up. You said they, they'll work on the tables if no one comes in.
No, I mean, they work for Otter Tail Lakes Country, and they just sat there. I mean, honestly, that's what happened. So the, all of, all of the effort that they were being paid for went to Otter Tail Lakes Country. Their side role was keeping it open for tourism for Pelican.
And that's what you want to do, is have a person there?
Correct. Yes, except for we would do it with local people. You know, that would be, I mean, as, as opposed to paying someone from the county, I think it would be better to pay someone from the city, someone local.
We're actually paying from, someone from the city.
The girl that did it was local.
Correct, she was, yes, but she won't be there this year. So, we don't know what that next person or staff would look like.
I personally think we should wait on this until we get that information. I don't know if we need to make a motion on that or not. If we do, I'll make a motion, or we postpone this discussion until we get the information from Otter Tail County Lakes Association, whatever that place was.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
I want to, one thing that, I know when we did this before, they went through how many phone calls and emails and things like that, and it was, they were answering questions about summer festivals and all those different kinds of things, which was, and it was actually, they were, I was amazed how busy doing that they were, because people would be traveling through the area and contacting them or emailing them. So they were actually fairly busy doing that.
Yeah, it's not just everybody that enters through the door. There was a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, there was mostly phone calls and that. And back to my point with you, maybe the Chamber could help fill that position through Otter Tail Lakes.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that that is a possibility, but what happens is then whoever the Chamber employee would be, would actually be an employee of Otter Tail Lakes Country, and at their direction.
Well, maybe you could work out something different. But the concern that we have is when we had it before with the Chamber, we couldn't keep it going.
Correct.
With Otter Tail Lakes, we've been able to do that.
Mm-hmm. And we would do the exact same service that Otter Tail Lakes Country is offering to you.
I know, but would it stay open? That, that's the concern.
Absolutely, yes.
You can't say that for certain, Joe, because we've been down that road and it didn't work.
Well, the problem was that it was completely unpaid. The city.
What was this?
No, no, you're paying the Chamber the exact same agreement that you had with Otter Tail Lakes Country. You know.
My question, are you writing a paycheck to every volunteer?
Um, that's yet to be seen. It depends on if the person volunteers. Yeah, take volunteer out of the conversation.
Wait, you said that. Come on, Joe. So some, you said some will be paid just now? I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, I want, I want to retract the volunteer statement altogether.
It's a volunteer, but just some will get paid and some won't. I don't get this.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor to table, or to postpone this to. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much, and we'll see you at the next one.
Let's jump up to item number seven, resolution establishing final plat of Pinewood Estate, resolution number 2024-02, which was in our packet. And we have Amy Baldwin here from Otter Tail County.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmember. Sorry for my, uh, missing the item earlier. Apologies for that. I'm not sure if Jack, our surveyor, is online or not. He said he, I didn't say he needed to join, he said he might join. So, um, I don't know if you want me to present, Lance, or do you want?
Yeah, go ahead. Jack is not on.
Okay, and that's fine. I didn't necessarily expect it. All right, well, good evening. As indicated, we have been proceeding with the preparation of the plat for the property that is now owned by the Community Development Agency, prior owned by Otter Tail County as the highway garage site that we have discussed previously. Planning Commission last evening reviewed, um, an updated plat for the final plat, uh, based on comments and input from that preliminary plat that was prepared, um, over the last six weeks or so, to have that, um, be ready for, um, execution. So the request tonight is, um, to support, uh, recommending, um, the passage of the resolution to establish that final plat for Pinewood Estates. Um, if I may just add a couple of updates, and I think, um, it was maybe at, at a recommended stage before, but we have been awarded funding from Minnesota Housing to support the construction of two or three new single-family homes on this site. So that would be interim, low-interest, uh, construction financing for those homes, to allow us to work with a private builder, um, to construct those homes, and then also fund that value gap that we've talked about before that exists, particularly for those entry-level homes, um, that cost to build versus what the cost, the appraisal ability of that home is in the Pelican Rapids market. So that gap grant funding was received, as well as that interim, uh, construction financing from Minnesota Housing. So we're really excited to have been formally notified of that award to help support kickstarting this project. Um, the plat, as had been discussed before, is, is the nine lots. We've addressed the issues that were identified, um, with some of the, um, various components of the plat from the preliminary to final. And there is that resolution that is up on the screen that has a, several conditions that, um, are suggested to be included. And then, in addition to that resolution, uh, we would ask the final title review, um, to be reviewed by, um, the city attorney as well for our title opinion, which we just don't have quite yet. But that is in preparation, so we should have that very shortly. So we wouldn't have the milars for the plat for signature until we ensure that that title review was done. Should there need to be any changes or anything, um, further updated on the plat, we would bring that forward as needed. So, um, but we believe we're in good shape with the plat as presented. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, or Lance, if there's anything else to add on that conversation?
I have a question on number, on two, development.
Hmm.
I think I asked this before, but if it's not a through street, can it be listed as an avenue?
So I did look into that with, I asked the League of Minnesota Cities, and there was, they had no restrictions on naming a street, whether it's through or a, or a dead end. There was no, they didn't know of any kind of restrictions of naming anything like that, so.
Councilman Strand, you're on the planning.
Yeah, um, we met with Amy last night, and she made the, you know, changes that we had talked about, and, um, everything is good to go. So I move to adopt resolution number 2024-02.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, so our, our hope would be to begin the, uh, with the final plat prepared, we'll work with Apex Engineering, um, in coordination with the city to get the infrastructure planning and get that out for bid this winter yet, and awarded for summer construction on the infrastructure, and then, um, have that, those new homes hopefully starting, assuming all the pricing and, and, you know, bidding all goes, um, as it needs to, um, to be started yet this calendar year. So, uh, it'd be our goal to have homes being under construction this calendar year.
Exciting news. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, item number nine, library report is in the packet. Uh, Councilman Ballard, anything to add?
Uh, we had our first meeting last night, um, elected new officers, Cheryl Brenna is the new chair. Other than that, that's it.
Any other council men have any, uh, questions? We don't need to make a motion, just.
Definitely.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Item number 13 is Otter Tail Power Lease Agreement, which is in your packet. Uh, Lance?
Yes, so this Otter Tail Power has approached us to lease one acre of the Sand Salt Shed Lot, um, for the construction of the 2425 Complete Streets Project, so they can store some, some of their materials and things there and use it during the construction. Um, so it's just one acre of that lot, cause, uh, MinDOT and other, um, contractors could possibly use that area as well. So on the, on the back, or the last page of that agreement, there is, um, a little map there, and it just kind of shows the area. Now, we're not going to hold them to that exact area there, but we just wanted to make sure that it was specified as one acre, so other, other contractors in MinDOT could use that if, if they approach us and want to, and want to lease some area as well. Um, so the lease is for $300.
Four or five acre lot?
It is, yep. It's like, it's four, yeah. I believe it's four something.
Right.
So they proposed $300 a month, which, and, uh, just a lump sum payment right away of $7,200 for the, for the two years, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I did have the city attorney look through everything, and she was good with everything, so.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Cause the, the state is also, is it the state leasing some part of it also, or?
Well, the state did own it, and then now we own it.
Right, but then they came back and wanted.
Well, they're using it for their, uh, their liquid, for their ice, de-icing liquid. They have a couple tanks there now, yeah.
And they're, they're leasing that also, or just?
That was just an agreement to you, be able to use it. They're not, there's no.
Yeah, we aren't generating, generating money off that.
Not for that one, no. But there could be the, like I said, the contractors for this project, or MinDOT themselves, could come and want to use some of that area as well, but.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Item number 14, people's service agreement, annual adjustment, which is in your packet. Lance?
All right, so this is an adjustment that is made every year, starting January 1st. Um, so in the agreement, it says it's based on the computer, or consumer price index plus 1%. So that comes out to be 4% this year. So a 4% increase. Uh, that expenditure amount will be increased from 17,917 to 18,634, and then the compensation, the monthly compensation increased from that 22,457 to 23,355. So in that, I guess, one thing to note, in that agreement, so each year, they, they follow that compute, consumer price index. Um, there is a floor of 3%, so it would at least be a 3% increase every year, but there is also a cap of that 7%. So we're right in the middle there of that 4% this year. So last year, it was a 5% increase, so, just for comparison, so.
I'll move, we accept the agreement.
Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion?
Was there, I, I know in the agreement, the original agreement, they pay back a certain amount of money that wasn't spent?
If that expenditure amount, that maintenance repair expenditure amount is not met, then they'd pay that back.
Do we know if?
We were over that amount this year by.
Over?
Couple thousand, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be getting bill for that soon.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Item number 15, Independent School District, number 548, Use Agreement, which is in your packet. Lance?
All right, this is the use agreement that the school has provided for the multi-use building. Um, it just kind of lays out who's responsible for what. It, it lays out our, our commitment to that 150,000 for this five years, 30,000 a year for five years. Our last payment will be in 2027. Um, we'll have use of the warming house. Uh, the city is responsible for setting up the skating rink, flooding the rink, uh, removing the snow, maintenance of the, and repair of the skating rink, and then tearing down and cleanup of the skating rink in the spring. So the school district will provide the, the supervisor for the, for the warming house, for the skating rink during the hours in which they, they, they will set the hours. Um, they'll store the skates. They're, they're responsible for the maintenance upkeep of the building and cleaning of the warming house and the restrooms. Um, I also had the city attorney look through this one, and we're good, so.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
So we have that 150,000 from that trail, right? That's, I mean, all that money is, so then we're just going to pay 30,000 a year out of that 150,000 rather than?
That was the plan.
Pay it all and be done with it?
You could do, I mean, they would, I'm sure they wouldn't be opposed to, if you wanted to do it and be done with it, but it's.
Yeah, we've already paid 30,000 of it, so, in 2023.
They were fine with just getting a payment in December of each year of that 30,000, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Items 16 is Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center Change Request Number Four and Five, which are in your packet. Lance?
Okay, there's two change requests. Number four has to do with the, um, the parking lot that got, so it got removed out of the plans. This is just the electrical part of it. So it's just adjusting the contract, and it's subtracting the amount by that 4,000-some dollars there. And that doesn't, I mean, that's not, not the asphalt or not anything else. It's just the lighting for the parking lot that's getting taken out. There'll be more change requests in the future for the, like, the actual tar and the dirt work and stuff for the parking lot. So that's a savings of that 4,655.32. Change Request Number Five has to do with, um, a couple different things. The, the water fountain, the drinking fountain. In the plans, it was in an interior in the corridor, I believe. Um, in talking, I think it was with the inspector and with the architect and things, they wanted it outside. So that's part of it, is to change it from the interior to the exterior. So that means it's a different kind of, different kind of fountain and things, and then the changing and getting the plumbing there and things. Um, and then there's three-floor drains, so there's three different bathrooms there, changing rooms, whatever. So there's a women's and a men's and a. rooms, whatever, so there's a women's and a men's and a family. So in the shower area, there was the regular floor drains, and when the plumbing inspector came, he said he will be pouring water down those drains. If there's any kind of standing water, he would make them remove it and do it over. So that really scared the plumbers, so now they would like to put in trench drains to make sure that that did not happen, so. So to, to change them from those regular floor drains to the trench drains, that's, and the moving of the drinking fountain is an increase of that five thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Trench drain.
Well, it's, basically, instead of a drain like this, it's just a long trench drain like that, so it's easier to slope.
All the jugs in there and then the?
Yeah.
Okay. And the fountain, like outside, outside?
On the outside of the building, on, on the, on the pool side, of course, but.
Okay.
That was recommended.
That's what it was like on the old building, they had it outside.
Okay, is there a motion to approve pay request four and five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Let's go down to item number eighteen, Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center pay request number six, which is in your packet. Lance?
All right, this is the latest pay request, it's just for the work that they've performed here just recently, so the current amount due is a hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. If you have any questions on it, or. I guess I'll take this time to update on the, on the state appropriations, so I did finally hear back from someone from DED, we're getting a different representative, but he assured me he's going to let me know as soon as he knows when they get those funds in the appropriate accounts, and then, so they're very aware that we've started the project and we're waiting for their funds, but it's still gonna be a little while, so. So it's good, we're very, I mean, we're sitting just fine right now, but we are eventually gonna need those funds to finish those projects, and they're very aware of that, so.
Is there a motion to approve pay request number six?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Let us go back up to item number seventeen, vacation ordinance number 2024-01, which is in your packet, and Danielle also handed out a supplemental to that, and Danielle's gonna speak to that.
Yeah, I put a revised one on there. Lindsay had just added the permanent part-time employees, holiday pay that we had talked about a while ago. The vacation stuff is the same stuff we approved before, it just changes code, so in order to change code, we have to pass an ordinance. So this is, this is the vacation schedule that you guys had passed before, we just need to change, or approve an ordinance so the code can get changed, and the same with the permanent part-time employees, part, or holiday pay. We talked about it, we approved it before, and now it's just put into an ordinance so I can change code. So it's just updating our code, basically. If you have any questions?
So the, it hasn't changed the vacation time, the?
No, this, I mean, this, it changes from previous years, but this is what we talked about a couple of months ago. It's not any different than what you approved when we approved the police union.
Yeah, all part of the police union contract.
So the permanent part-time employees, that's the new part?
We talked about that before, too.
But it wasn't in the packet, though.
That's the new part from the packet.
No, that, right, that's the part that Lindsay just added today.
How many do we have?
Um, well, there's, I have one here, there's three at the library, and then the liquor store, they, I mean, just depends, they have probably been five, so.
So looking for a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-01.
I'll move we pass 2024-01.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Aye.
Ballard.
Epstein.
Foster.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Item number nineteen, electing an acting mayor, and the, several past years, Councilman Foster has voluntarily stepped up.
Yeah, nominated Steve Foster, he's done an excellent job.
Second.
Motion is second.
Done.
Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Congratulations. Item number twenty is approve, 2024 appointment to boards and authorities, which is in your packet, but there's one change. We're going to eliminate the last historic city hall representative, Wayne Runnigan, and Wayne, Mr. Runnigan had requested to Administrator Royson to step down from this, and we talked about this yesterday, and we don't figure we need anybody in that appointment because police, or excuse me, the street department usually oversees historic city hall anyway.
Park board is overseeing it now.
So we need, so we?
Yeah, we have, we have a motion. You can make a motion and also to eliminate that.
So I move to approve the 2024 appointments to boards and authorities with the elimination of the historic city hall representative.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number twenty-one is approve city fee schedule, and that is in your packet also, and there's no changes from last year, is that right, Danielle?
There was just two changes, I believe. I highlighted them in yellow, I don't know if I sent them to you guys in yellow, though, that's always tricky. The first one was man with machine, it's the second one down, it went from a hundred dollars an hour to a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, and then the next one down is sewer jetter with two men was changed from a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and those were both suggested by Brian, because he said with, with the cost of stuff nowadays, you just can't, it doesn't cover our expenses. So those were the only two changes.
I'll move the adoption of the fee schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Yeah, you know, I have issue with a mobile home deposit. I mean, how many, last year, did that, how many times did it use last year, the deposit system?
I would have to look, I, I just don't know off the top of my head.
None, right?
Oh, no, I mean, it's used. Every time somebody buys a tra, a mobile home, or it, yeah, it's used.
So you charge them fifty dollars, but we don't know who gave the other fifty dollars, right? The whole thing, you know how I feel about this.
Yep.
It's discriminatory, you change it from trailer park, or trailer home to mobile home, it's wrong, you guys. I'm still mad about it.
Couple of questions. How many wine, liquor, beer licenses do we have out?
Uh, that are being used?
Yeah.
So, so, so the intoxicating liquor, we have one out and one in the process.
Okay.
Um, we have one club license, we have, um, and that's, that's probably it for on sale, and then the rest would just be all three, two off sale, like at the gas stations.
Do we have a limit of, of that?
Yeah, it says in our ordinances how many of each license we can have.
Is that based on population of the city?
You know, I know, yeah, it could be, it's been a while since I've looked into it. I know that the state dictates how many you can have, but then also the city can limit it down lower. I know that we can have three intoxicating licenses, and so I know that we have one out and I have another person applying for one right now.
I have one more question.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, one more question. So last year, did anybody lose their deposit for non-payment of services with the city? The trailer park fee? Did anybody lose fifty dollars?
I guess I don't know what you're asking me.
Did anyone not pay for the city service, water sewer, and lose their deposit?
Did we lose the money?
Did they lose it?
No, I mean, if they move, it gets applied to their account.
Did anybody not, was this utilized, the deposit, for non-payment?
I, I guess I don't know what you're asking, Steve. When people buy a trailer, they do pay the fifty dollar deposit, yes.
But was that utilized this past year, the deposit, for anybody, because they didn't pay the bill?
Yes, I have some people that did not pay their final bill that we had to apply that fifty dollars to.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yes, okay.
Like three of them, last year?
I, I would have to look it up.
Really?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
Roll call voice.
Roll call vote.
Strand.
Me.
Ballard.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
And Fraser.
Aye. Motion passed, thank you. Item number twenty-two is set.
Second. I think, to be fair to Steve, we ought to look this information up and have it.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Item twenty-two is.
Hate to see him mad every year.
Set time, place, and date of regular meetings, right now our city council meetings are on the second and last Tuesday of the month at four thirty PM at City Hall. Is there a motion to approve as is, or is there a change?
So moved, same.
Same.
Yep.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number twenty-seven is Great Northern Drive Road easement. Lance?
All right, so the city attorney and I, we've been working on getting these temp, or these easements for this detour for the 2425 project, so the council has already approved using Great Northern Road as a detour and the little cut across that the elevator owns there. So basically, Lindsay's been working on this, she's got a couple of them ready, she just had them ready like an hour before the council meeting, so I didn't get them out to anybody, but basically what I'm looking for is just a motion to authorize the city attorney to get the easements in place to allow the detour routes for the Great Northern Road. MinDOT is just requiring to get this paperwork in place to get these easements done so they can finalize that detour route and things, so that's all I'm looking for right now.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
I have a question. Has the city ever thought about trying to buy them out? I mean, what's the, what's the point of Great Northern owning property in town, they don't have a, there's no longer a railroad here, that's the purpose of it.
I think years ago in the past, it was the cost, it was enormous cost, what they wanted for their, I mean, we're going back twenty, thirty years ago. I don't know what, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is today.
I mean, it just makes no sense to me that we have to, I mean, they don't have a, there's no longer a railroad in town, there's no longer even any remnant of a railroad in town. At least when I was a kid, there was tracks across the street, but I mean, there's not even that anymore.
Correct.
So why are we paying, or I don't know if we're paying anything, but asking for an easement for something that's, we maintain, we plow it, we grade it, we?
They don't actually own it, it's just called that, right?
Well, there's Great Northern property somewhere, but this, this is, so the property owners are along there, the MinDOT has what they need for some of these properties, but they don't for the elevator, the old AMPI building, and then Carla Johnson's. We just need to get these easements for those parcels, so MinDOT has the right paperwork so we can use that road as a detour, is basically what this is.
Yeah, I mean, I get that, it's, I've never understood why we, like I said, we maintain the road, we grade the road, we plow the road, but we don't own the road, because that's what.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, it's all privately owned, basically. If you, if you look at the map, the elevators goes right up to the school property, the same with Carla.
Maybe that's something we look at.
So could the elevator extend their property, not their property, buildings to the west and there would be no thoroughfare? Could they legally do that?
Do we have an easement with them in place?
Well, we will after this.
Yeah, I mean, if it's privately owned property, they.
They could, if they want.
They could really throw a wrench in the horse if they.
So with this, this will be a permanent easement through here, but this, so that where we're gonna use this, this will be a temporary easement to use this as a detour, because there could be a day when the elevator builds, I mean, they own, they own this property here, they, they could build right here and this road will be no longer. As for this road, I mean, yeah, it's been, you can see where the property line goes.
Tom Pace came to Rotary today to talk about this.
Really?
And they're gonna use that temporary path through there to limit the Great Northern, the traffic on Great Northern and split it. I don't know which is going which way, but they're gonna use that, so you split the traffic.
Southbound traffic will just continue on Great Northern and then go up Fifth and that way, northbound will take them down first and then use this little cut across. So that'll just be one way on this really narrow stretch, and then it'll be head to head on when it widens out right here.
That's gonna take some education. Okay, we have a.
Why do we?
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number twenty-three, city administrator report. Lance?
Since the last meeting, we worked with the clerk and mayor to set the agenda and prep for the city council meeting, attended two pool construction meetings, attended an EDA and an EDC meeting, met with the League of Minnesota Cities officials at the Fergus Falls City Hall and discussed a variety of different subjects, focusing mostly on the LMC Insurance Trust dividends, attended the Ottertail County Workforce Convening, set up and hosted at City Hall a countywide emergency preparedness advisory committee meeting, met with Jordan Grossman and Joe Klossen about historic city hall staffing, researched historic city hall staffing history and the associated contracts, talked with Nick Leonard about the current staffing at historic city hall, set up and attended special council meeting appoint, appointing the new library board director, met with DNR Senior Grants Specialist Sarah Winterberg in Peterson Park for inspection for the outdoor recreation grant, met with Mayor Fraser and council member Foster and completed my performance evaluation, worked with city attorney Forzgrin on the Great Northern Road easements for the MinDOT detour, worked with Amy Baldwin on getting the final plat ready for the, for approval, worked with Ottertail Power on the lease agreement for the Sand Salt Shed Lot, worked with the school district on the multi-use building agreement, attended a planning commission meeting, attended a library board meeting, and met with superintendent Olson to set priorities for the airport capital improvement plan.
priorities for the airport capital improvement plan. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You met with all these people with Klosson and
Mm-hmm.
Did all this stuff come up then? That we went over tonight?
They started conversations about it, yeah.
Okay.
So that's why, that's, when Joe came and we'd met with Jordan and stuff, that's when I reached out to Nick Leonard and asked him about the history and things and
So what did Joe Leonard have to say about all of this?
Well, it's Nick Leonard, so when I
Or Nick Leonard, yeah.
Talked to him, like I said before, that, that position is open right now, so that they want to kind of know what we're going to do soon, so they know if they need to advertise for the position or not. I mean, they're fine if we go a different route, he said, I mean, they're fine with it, what they don't want to see is
In June?
Yeah, exactly. We come back to them in June saying, well, it's not working out, and, so.
Okay.
But they're, they're aware of what's going on anyway, and I'll be contacting him again to see what the, kind of the traffic was this summer and what it has been in the past, to know how much that building is utilized.
The chamber's all behind us, I mean, I don't even know how many members there are.
I, um, what if, I'm assuming city hall gets their fair share of calls also, same stuff? You guys, can, I mean, could you kind of have an, could you have an idea of your number two to bring into the conversation next time? I mean, that
Okay.
Know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, what, what worries me, getting back to this, is, you know, the volunteers didn't work in the past, so how are they gonna work now? With less people, with less businesses?
Can't find help, so I
I think, his mistake was bringing up the word volunteer in his discussion, because I think his initial proposal was to, rather than pay the money to Otter Tail County, he wanted the money paid to Chamber, and the Chamber would then do the same thing Otter Tail County did, be the Chamber that would be orchest, overseeing it, they would be paying.
But this, this Chamber in the committee was, that bothers me, you got
And that's, I think, I think the confusion came about when he, when he started talking about volunteers, and I, so, I mean, I, I understand what he's trying to throw out, but
Meeting's still open.
Okay, any other questions for Lance? Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-four, mayor report, just a few items in the last couple of weeks. Attended a special city council meeting here with all you gentlemen to appoint a new board member to the library board, had conversations with the mayor's historic city hall on December twenty-seventh, Councilman Foster and I met with Administrator Royson for his performance evaluation on December twenty-seventh. I was in Fergus Falls a couple of weeks ago, and I stopped by and visited Interstate Engineering, who remodeled their current building close to downtown, and had a tour of that, and then also stopped by and tented design our engineers for our aquatic center. Then met with Administrator Royson and our new police chief acquaintance yesterday, and just to, just to get, you know, his feel on what he thought the job would encompass, and, you know, just starting out on ground zero and getting a little more acquainted. Then also met with Administrator Royson yesterday to plan the agenda for this afternoon's city council meeting. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Seeing no more business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Meeting adjourned.